Good evening, everybody. Apologies for the late start. The board was busy with other village business. So we unfortunately ended a few minutes late, but here we are. So let me call to order and let's start with the pledge and then we will get going with a special meeting.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Thank you all, Mayor. I'll call the roll.
Great.
Deputy Mayor Kazada.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Fritchie.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
And Mayor Levin.
Present.
We have one item on the agenda for the special meeting this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board with regard to that specific resolution? Not seeing anyone. Village Board Resolution Finance Establishment of 2021 Veterans Park Playground Equipment Capital Project. That should be DASNY.
What is it saying?
It says Danzy and transfer from general fund contingency. Whereas village management wishes to establish a capital project of $160,000 for the Veterans Park Playground Equipment funded by a DASNY grant of $150,000 and a transfer from general fund of $10,000. Now therefore be it resolved, capital projects and capital project budgets are established as follows and then listed after that are the capital project and capital project budgets. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Any comments on the board?
Yeah, just one question since we're, is this something? Maybe I'm a little confused. Would this be under budget for future capital? Or is this something that we're just moving with now? Because it's budget time. So usually there's capital projects that come up that are, that are in the, in the hopper. So or is this just something that's the, the grant is there to grab and we're going to run with it?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. And to answer your question, yes, we were awarded the grant. The grant total is 150,000. It came to light when they were doing preliminary estimates for the playground equipment that it's actually going to exceed it by a small portion depending on the final bid and all that. But in accordance with DASNY's grant award requirements, if a project is expected to go over the award amount, we need to appropriate the funds in addition in order for the grant to be finalized. And that's what this resolution does so that we can meet our deadline for that.
All right. Thank you, Dale. I just wasn't aware that we were awarded a grant. This is the first I'm hearing.
Yeah, we actually, Bob, we, um, it happened rather quickly, I would say, in relation to how grants are done. This is for the playground equipment, I think, or AD, like there's special needs. Is this a special needs? Pieces to the playground or is this a different project?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is actually a different project.
Okay.
The one that, that was a part of the CDBG plan.
Okay.
This is the dormitory authority money, which is basically appropriations that in this case we got from Senator Reichlin Melnick. He assigned these ones to us for this project.
Right. So this happened actually rather quickly, Bob. We briefly discussed it like when in an email this. It's a gift. I, I mean, a good way. It's, it's tax money being used correctly, but it was part of, the senator had given out a number of grants to different communities and we were fortunate enough to have one of them. I don't know if anybody objects. The only issue I have is if we didn't get it right at 150, Dale, what happens if it's 20,000, 30,000, $50,000 more? Like are we now? So now we're committed.
At that point, we would, if, if we did still want to move forward and cover that additional cost, we would then do an additional bond resolution, budget adjustment for it. So this is an interfund transfer. And so likewise, if the amount comes in lower, we can, at the end of the closet, the project closeout, send the, the monies back to the general fund that weren't expended.
Okay. So obviously we have to keep the budget tight and where we're supposed to be and come back to the board for more money. That would be the ideal scenario. Sorry, Annie.
No, no. And thank you, Mayor, and Dale and Maddie and everybody that was involved in this. You know, so I guess I just have like a general question in regards to this, or who decides of the playground equipment? And how is that? Because that's based on the budget. Sure. That's what we're just talking about. If, if we go over budget, who makes those decisions and how does that translate to, does, does it go out to bid? Is it a set of draws that is put together? How does that work? Because I haven't, I have not, my recollection, I haven't been involved in something like this in the past.
We don't get this very often.
No, we don't.
We're all like sitting here shocked. Actually, we should just say thank you and move on to be honest.
But I don't want to go over budget.
We're just being inquisitive because we don't get this very often.
It, it's, it's my understanding that they, they are planning on going out to bid. I know Bill Garrison has also been involved. So in regards to, you know, maybe sizing placement, what works best, you know, that will all be part of the, the project proper. So we will probably, you know, be coming back with more information as, as we move ahead.
Yeah. So that's, and thank you, Dale. You know, that will be very helpful. And obviously we would like to keep this on budget. Let's say if we have to remove or replace one item for something else, you know, I'm not sure how, how will that work, but you know, um, it'd be, it'd be nice to be obviously to see the dead product. And like I said last time, when we're talking about, um, Mansell City Park, I would love to be involved in the design as well. Then it helps, but, uh, but yeah, not a hundred percent with this project. I think it'd be great, especially for the kids.
So I'm going to say. Sorry, I'm going to say thank you to the Senator and Stuart.
All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting and move into work session, please?
Go move. Second.
I think you could take the vote, Stuart.
That's fine. All those in favor.
Aye. Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are, we have, I think, only one person on, but it's being recorded. We are going to move to work session. It's officially adjourned, whatever time that was and we're moving. I just.
Mark down.
Okay, let me.
Good evening again, everybody. So I am here this evening in Manager Dettori's absence. Nice to see everyone. We have four agenda items this evening, three of which are going to be led by Corporation Counselor Stewart Cahan. For the first one, Building Inspector Joe Augustinelli is going to be with him as well. The board may remember that Stewart had brought forth proposed local law number 14 of 2021, a couple of months back at this point. And the board had some feedback that they wanted Stewart to return and make a couple of changes. And so now we are back. So the version, updated version of the local law is embedded in the agenda on the website and I will hand it over to Stuart and Joe.
Thank you, Maddie. Let me just make one correction. The embedded version in the agenda is actually the prior version because what I wanted to do is discuss with the board tonight. Some of the things that Joe and I had talked about. It is, there used to be a movie many years ago called If It's Tuesday, It Must Be Belgium. So I'm thinking that if it's local law 14, it must be certificates of appropriateness because the numbers are beginning to merge in my head. But the board, at the last time we discussed the local law, had a number of comments and number of questions with regard to essentially how the law would work. Issues relating to life safety in terms of shutting down particular buildings or shutting down locations. I have Joe here to, to help out. One of the important things to recall with regard to this local law was to provide the building department with the ability to conduct inspections primarily of the one and two family homes in our village, which otherwise are really not subject to inspection. And this would allow the buildings department to, you know, inspect these properties. The important thing I want to stress and something Joe and I talked about yesterday and to assuage any concerns that the board may have, the idea here is not, not to stop a sale. The idea is not to say to a prospective buyer, you may not purchase that house. The idea is to allow the building department to conduct an inspection of the premises to see if there are any violations. And I was viewing this as sort of a, a number of different scenarios. One is seller and buyer. One family house, no violations, no issues. Building inspector comes in, sees it. Updated CO is simply issued. No, there's no, there's no issue. Second scenario. Buyer seller, there are violations in the building, but the seller indicates, or the buyer indicates it is their intention to demolish the building. In that case, uh, what would be basically the buyer would be afforded the opportunity over a numbered period of, over time, let's say 120 days to obtain a demolition permit. And they get the demolition permit. All is taken care of. If they don't get the demolition permit and they don't seek, you know, additional time to get the permit, then they would be subject to the violations that were pointed out by the building inspector during their inspection. The next scenario would be that the seller is selling to the buyer. And when the building inspector comes in, let's say it's a property that is in a two-family T-zone and the building inspector comes in and notices there are four apartments in that building. But all our records show it is a legal two-family. There is no permit for any, any additional units. There is no CO for any additional units. In that case, the building inspector would advise the prospective purchaser that, you know, we're here, we're not here to stop, stop your sale, but there are these violations. And because it involves apartments, which we do not have any, uh, any permits or CO for, those particular apartments may not be occupied until you get the necessary approvals. In this case, it might be a use variance from the zoning board of appeals plus the necessary permits that would be required from, uh, from the building department. And we would want to keep those particular units unoccupied. And it would also, that would also result in a notification by the building department to the assessors office saying that you may have this assessed as a three or a four, but it's actually just legally a two and it has never been approved for anything beyond that. This situation occurs far more often than you might think. Homes are sold as three and fours and Joe can, you know, certainly testify to this fact that people come in after the sale is done saying, you know, I want to do X, Y, and Z. And they suddenly find out that legally you're not allowed to do that because your house is in fact not a three or a four. It's just a two. So in that scenario, again, we're not stopping the sale. We are saying however, that those particular units should not be occupied. A twist on that is that the seller sells to the buyer and the property, the entire property lacks a CO. We've recently had this with a property, you know, on Lincoln. In that situation, again, we're not here to stop the sale, but we are here to say that you can't occupy that property until you have gotten your necessary approvals, be it again, CO, potentially site plan, potentially variances, whatever is needed, that has to be done. You'll be given a certain amount of time to do it. Joe and I talked maybe 120 days. You could even get an extension of that if you needed, but if you didn't get the extensions and you didn't get the, the permits, you would be subject as the buyer to violations for what exists within that particular building. But in all of these cases, it would allow the building inspector or his designee to get into the property to essentially see the condition of the property. I should point out that if the building inspector goes in and they are seeing, let's call it, let's call it less than life safety violations. There's a problem with a leader in a gutter. There's a problem with siding. There's a problem with a window. You simply make the buyer aware of those violations and say that they have to get that violation, those violations should be resolved. You know, by, by, by a date certain. The important thing is that the buyer acknowledges in writing that they're making that purchase with the understanding that there, these violations are there. Many of the violations may well be picked up in a title report, but not always. Particularly if we're dealing with outstanding orders to remedy, but not actual court appearance tickets. So that's, that, this is to allow the building inspector to essentially get into that property, do those inspections. And, and the, the great concern deals with those properties which have, uh, you know, living units that have not been approved and things like that. I'll give you an example. On the flip side, we have, and Joe can say this, we have many buildings where we, we have people have put in solar, but they have never filed the electrical certification that's required. Technically, that's an open permit. Uh, and that's a violation. And some of these people have put in their solar eight, nine years ago. Let's assume that property is in the process of being sold. We would simply notify the new buyer that that is something that has to be cured. In circumstances where we can, we might issue what's called, uh, and Joe, remind me of the term again with the letter that we issue. It's the, just help me again.
It's, uh, we, a predate letter when.
That's it.
When a home doesn't have a C of O record, often the lender will request a predate letter, which is essentially us doing an inspection, doing an inventory of the building, see if there's any violations. And if, if there aren't any, we would issue a predate letter in lieu of a C of O. But in those cases, differences of predate letter is only upon request when, when the lender or the potential buyer, their attorney is requesting it. And what, what we're proposing here, which Stuart is explaining, would not be at request of, of the, the buyer or the lender, but it would have to happen on all, all transactions.
So, thank you, Joe. So what we're, what we're looking to do here again is not stand in the way of a sale. As I wrote to you yesterday, I can only foresee in the most egregious circumstances where that might occur. And I would only recommend that to the board upon receipt of a court order that would say that the village could actually sort of intervene in that circumstance. But again, the, the primary idea here is to afford the building, the building department, the ability to conduct those inspections. And to, to essentially find those particular places where the issue is, is, is to be blunt, most egregious. And then make, so the buyer knows what has to be done and that those particular units, if it's, if it's units in a house or whatever, that's usually how it happens, would be placarded and, and essentially made not livable. If the buyer determines that they don't want to go ahead with the sale, that's the buyer's determination. But it will not be, the, the village is not, you know, be going to, as I said, stop the sale. As long as the buyer is doing it essentially with eyes wide open and acknowledges that in writing. You know, I, I, you know, I would be comfortable with that, at least from my perspective. And so what we propose and what's going, what I would suggest is revising the, the proposed local law to make it clear that what the building department is doing is an inspection to see what is outstanding in a particular property and to afford the buyer the opportunity to get that repaired. That may be done through putting money into escrow as part of the sale. That may be done as, you know, you know, in, in other particular ways. But most important is that if you have living units that have not been approved, and it's, as I said, you, you, you're selling a property saying it's got four, four apartments and it's only a two. That's a circumstance where clearly the building inspector has to say, well, those additional units can't happen. I should point out, we're seeing that happen frequently in foreclosure sales. Banks are in many cases listing it as a three or a four when it is legally just a two. And that is, you know, wreaking havoc because the buyer comes in saying, well, I bought it as a three. And that's not an argument that would really suffice in court, but it, it, it creates significant problems, particularly when they're coming before, you know, into the building department, you know, asking for certain permits when it turns out that what they've got in fact is illegal. And as I said, we're seeing that more and more with foreclosure properties where banks and other lending institutions are selling it based upon what they understand to be the, what's, what's available in the property rather than in fact what is the zoning district designation for the property and what is, what is in the CO. So that's, that's what's proposed for local law 14. It does require some, some work from, from, from my end and from Joe's. But I did want to bring you up to date. I was last before you on this about two months ago. So I didn't want to, you know, let you know, and I wanted to have Joe here as well because it will obviously primarily impact his department. And I think one of the things that Joe and I discussed and I would ask him perhaps to talk to the board about is it will involve additional inspections to be done by his department. And in many cases by him or by code enforcement officers and at least initially that's going to be a bigger workload. So that's obviously, we don't want to, I, I don't want to recommend legislation to the board that at the end of the day, we can't enforce. So I think that's, you know, just an aspect. And Joe, if you want to comment on that, that would be great.
Yeah. One of the things also just to add, Stuart, we also have a lot of instances where there are pre-existing non-conforming uses. So somebody has a four family in a two-family zone district and it's a pre-existing condition. But zoning code indicates, you know, if the building is not occupied for more than six months, you actually lose that non-conformity and you'll have to go back to what the zoning district calls for. So often when a home is empty for a year, two years, and then it gets sold, the bank ends up selling it for what it was known as, has, how was occupied previously as a four family. We have this right now on Yale Avenue. We have a multifamily building that's in a T-zone. It's been vacant for five years. Somebody bought it now and thought they bought a five-family home. But the zoning code says that you have to, you can only make a two-family unless you want to get a use variance, which means now they have to go to the zoning board and try to, you know, see if they can get the board to grant use variance for a five-family in a, in a two-family zone district. But if we were doing these inspections, the buyer would be made aware of this before they would enter into the purchase of the property. And then we don't have this issue after they purchase it. And then realize I paid what I thought was value for a five-family. And now I'm being told they only have a two-family because of where the zoning law. So in, in a lot of ways, this would be in benefit for the potential buyer because they're aware of what the situation is before they decide to buy it. And if, if, if we spell it out to them, what, what we, you know, if it's only a two-family and not a four, not a three, these are the violations and they agree upon that, then they go into the contract, understanding what they're getting all the. So there's not any of this, this confusion or, or something they have to deal with after the fact, after they went through the transaction. As for what Stuart is referencing to the amount of work, yes, we're aware that this is going to be more inspections and so forth. But in the long run, you know, the biggest problem we have is getting into the one and two families because we can't, we can't require a fire inspection. We can only require a fire inspection yearly or every three years when the house is a three-family or more. One and two families are just subject to us getting in, whether the owner allows us to get in or in a circumstance when there's the police or the fire department are present for an emergency situation, they contact us. But in this case, you know, this would give us an opportunity to, to view these properties, see what's actually going on there, create a record in our, our records and system of what is, what we observe, what's legal, what's supposed to be there, make an inventory of it. And then the next time the house goes through a sale or there's a complaint or a violation, we have a reference to, to, to actually use and say, well, we were there last year and this is what we issued a C of O for. So there's no going back to, prior to that C of O, how the, how that property or how that building is used because we've created that and we've established it. But yes, in the, in the, in the short term, it is more work, which we don't have a problem doing. I mean, whatever is going to, has to be done to actually somehow get a grasp of what's happening in some of these buildings and these homes. But I, I think it would be beneficial because it, it, in the way I see it, it's, it's a positive all the way around for the seller to understand, for the potential buyer, for the building department, the village to get records and try to clear, clear up some of the uses of these buildings that are being used maybe in ways that are approved.
Okay. Time for commentary?
I mean, I agree that, you know, it completely makes sense that the person buying the house fully understand what it is they're buying because if some, if I thought I was buying a four-family and before the sale was finished, I found out it's a legal two and I might not be able to operate it as a four, I'm going to want to pay less money for it. So it's going to, you know, it's, it's, I think it, but I think it's absolutely, absolutely the way to go because you know, people know what they're getting. Some sellers may not be crazy about it, but you know, it is one way to, to kind of start getting a handle on, on some of these issues.
Thank you.
I just have one question. How are we made aware of the sale besides the fact that the title company?
The, the idea trustee Fritchie would be that a certain number of days before the closing, it could be 30, it could be 45, it could be 60. The building department would be notified by the seller of the intention to sell the property. Because what often happens, I mean, we, and Joe and I, for example, get a sense of properties that are going to be for sale because we can tell through foil requests because we get a large number of foil requests from realtors who are asking for, you know, COs and permits on buildings. And, and they're, and so we know that the properties that are involved, but specifically the idea is to say to the, the seller, you have to notify your building department. What I, what I would foresee is that notifying the local realtors in the area and saying, this is now what the law is in Austin. It's already done in Sleepy Hollow. It's done in Peak Skill. It's done in Tarrytown. And, you know, other, and some other river communities. And basically to just let, you know, the realtors know so that as part of, you know, their due diligence, they can say to the, to the seller, who's their client generally, you're going to have to let the village know so that they can come in and do their inspection. And so that, that would be the notification. We would not rely on the title companies because in many cases, we don't, the title company may not even ask for a certification from us until a day or two before the closing. So this, this way we get the information from the buyer. I think the current legislation, the common proposal has 60 days before. That would give enough time, I think, for the inspection process to, to run its course. That may be some, in some cases too long, so it may have to, we may have to lessen that to 45, but that was the idea in terms of notification.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? I was on mute. Sorry about that, folks.
If I may, I'm, I'm not sure if anybody else, Stuart.
Please.
Um, thank you. Thank you very much. From the last time that we had this meeting, it's very helpful to actually see that, um, it addresses at least my concerns that, that we had, that I had at that time. I do appreciate all the hard work that you have done for this. So I do have, um, I have two questions.
Please.
Um, and more like piggyback of what Bob was talking about. Is there a way that we can work with the assessors office or the taxation portion when we send out taxes or when the taxes are sent out or the bills are sent out? Is there any way that we can put a notice if, if, if we, if we all agree that this is the next law, local law 14? Local law fourteen? Yes. So if we would pass local law fourteen, um, is there any way that we can communicate this in different ways? Um, uh, you know, putting adding something and and we should be sitting in a water bill. Um, or something along those lines that we can tell that we can target the homeowners and be like, if you're planning to sell your house. This law will affect you by doing this. So that's one comment. And we don't have to, you you guys don't have to answer me this now. Um, but that should be one of my suggestions. I think we tried to do that this before. The second one, um. Is I know to get us a new CEO or if I go to the building department and say, look, I need a certificate of occupancy. There's an application fee for this. Will that be the same concept? If I'm selling my house? Will that be an application? And if that's the case, will that be the same amount that I have to be paying if I was just requesting to get a copy of my certificate of occupancy?
Yeah. Joe and I haven't really discussed that, but I my 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 thought is that. There really shouldn't be a fee for this part of the process.
Essentially, if. That's it. You don't need to answer.
Well, I will, I will tell you this, on the fee schedule that we have, uh, pre-date inspections are are charged at about a hundred and fifteen dollars. Which is the same, the same uh inspection pretending. Essentially, except they're not requesting it. We're doing that. If if you feel, if the board feels that there should be no charge for this because we want, we don't wanna charge it, more of the. Intention is to be able to get in for our purposes to to. Verify what's there and not put something up that's a deterrent that would cause someone not to come forward. We don't have to charge the fee for it, but it we do charge for predate.
Thank you. Joe, at least my my suggestion for this is will be not to do this um the first time. Uh, you know, if you if you're as a seller, you know, you're not aware of any of that stuff. How much is the pre-letter? Is that a hundred and fifty?
It's uh, it's one, it's uh, right now it's charges a one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars. Okay, thank you. Um, so again, I'm gonna leave that up to the board, I guess, and we can talk about it more in detail. So when we go through the budget and the schedule, but my suggestion would be not to do that. Um, obviously, there's there's some penalties uh that will come if if there are some violations. After they give them the grievance of a hundred or a hundred and twenty days or whatever the case may be. Uh, at that point, I think, uh, I'm assuming store, even if they're, let's say they don't. After they have an extension, let's say another another sixty days.
Okay.
Do whatever they need to do. Is there any penalties that they will be facing?
What 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 I would suggest is that since. It would be the building inspector or someone in his department who would have visited the property and basically seen the violations. If the time within which the buyer is given to. Begin the process of correcting those violations passes and nothing has happened. Then uh, you know, the building inspector or whoever was there could issue, they could go directly to an appearance ticket. And based upon their observation, uh, and basically say. The these are the violations. This is what we observed. And in fact, it would be even stronger because we would have as a document. To make part of the appearance ticket, the acknowledgement by the buyer. That I'm aware of these violations. I know that they're there. Uh, so they would be able to do that. And so if they don't do it by a date certain, uh, we would uh. Be able to, uh, you know, write it up as an appearance ticket and, uh, you know, you know, get violations. We we do have, you know, we do have fines or fees that are charged. Based upon be it under chapter one sixty-two or chapter two seventy or violations of the state code. Those are already, you know, fees, you know, fees that are set, so the court could could do that, but this would also. Allow us that we wouldn't have to get back into the house to do another inspection. Because we could say, we observed it. This was it. They were given this amount of time. They never got back in touch. Go from there. Then if they wanna defend by saying we made the repairs. Well, they can do that. The problem is they haven't pulled a permit to make the repairs. So they've got a problem that way. So that I think is.
So um, and I'm not, we can talk about this offline, but.
Sure.
You know, um, at some point, it may be like minor violations or like silly stuff, um, you know. A lot of people, if you don't renovate your house, um, they're not aware that you may not, that that you are required. Um, and right now you are able to do uh the battery ones, you know, some of them that even come into connected, you know, wireless. Within itself, you know, violation like that is a simple fix. You know, just by battery ones, you know, uh. But let's say that you have to verify. At some point, you have to go back and verify situations like that, like small violations like that. So my suggestion will be. Just like we passed the resolution on on firing inspections that after the third inspection, Joe.
That's correct.
We'll we'll be charging, Manny says two, is it two?
Correct. We 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 do the initial one.
Second, so the third.
To the second, okay.
Right, we do.
So it's beginning with the third.
Yeah.
You'd get charged on the third.
Correct. That that will be my suggestion because at that point, you know, you know, we we've been more than accommodated enough. To go back and verify situations and and I think that will be, um, again. That's my suggestion to the board. I'm not sure if they will agree with that, uh, but that will be something that I'll be um asking. Um, for us to to consider all these. I mean, obviously, that's something that Stewart and and joking can um. Give a little bit of light into it if they agree to it at that point as well.
Now, I'm I'm trustee Kasada, I'm I'm glad you mentioned that because that was one of the things I was gonna say. Uh, what we do for the fire inspections for three families and up, it's exactly how we do. You do your initial inspection. And a follow-up for free. And then if we keep on having to come back, it's a cost for the village and and. And therefore we start to charge the five hundred dollar uh. The five hundred dollars for the inspection. We we generated a price of five hundred dollars because. You know, doing fire inspections of a of a multi-family in a building is a little bit larger to do. It doesn't have to be in this case of five hundred dollar charge. But I think the same procedure of we're we're coming out doing the initial one, you make the corrections and we come back and verify it, no charge to you. You've taken care of the violations and move on and thank you and as you see about. Uh, but if you're not complying, we have to do it three times, four times, five times, then yes, they 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 should be charged something.
So also in lieu of in in lieu of writing an appearance ticket, we're just gonna. Deal with this as just like a fire inspection, so to speak, but it's a C of O inspection, you know, and. Again, the third time we start charging. I mean, I agree with Manny, by the way. I would rather not see the appearance tickets. I'd rather see it just be. You know, the because. You know, most of these guys and they're, you know, that wad of money in their pockets daily business. So. Um, I think that it should go like that, you know, you do the original inspection, the buyer's aware of it, the buyer agrees, they're gonna take care of it within a certain time. They pull their permits, yada, 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 and uh, they don't notify you, then, you know, it needs to be. They need to be notified that, you know, you will be charged now for, you know, how many appearances we make to see to to remedy what was the violation.
Let me make just one suggestion to that trustee Fritchy. I I hear exactly what you and the deputy mayor are saying. I would not. Avoid the appearance ticket. Particularly if we're dealing with someone who has essentially got. A four-bedroom and a two. I just think it's important that there be a a a court document, even though it deals with issue inspection issues and. But if someone is basically got. And one of the terms used, and we talked about this in August, was life safety. That's a life safety issue. I think that. Needs to get into court so that, you know, they can, you know, whatever has to happen from that end. You know, let them, you know, basically explain it away, but I do agree. That part of the hundred twenty days or whatever period there there is, is that's the point by which the building inspector says, all right, I'm coming in now for an inspection. I'm gonna be there. As you said, you're gonna get essentially two bites at the apple for the inspection without getting charged. Third time. We start charging and if you don't pay us, goes on your next property tax bill. It's just, it's just gonna get it. So that that plus what we could do with an appearance ticket, I think, would work just fine. But at least it gets the person know. And again, unlike even in any other circumstance. The buyer here in writing acknowledges, these are the violations. This is what you got. This is what you gotta do. And uh, that I think is, uh, you know, stronger than, you know.
We're covering on both sides of the coin then.
Correct.
I I will, I will say this, since uh we approved the fee schedule for the fire inspections. Uh, what we do is when we're, before we start the fire inspection, we actually created a document and we give that to the owner of the building. And say, this is the way the fee schedule works. You don't get charged for the first one. You don't get charged for a follow-up. But then subsequently, you will get one. We have to come back to third times when we tell them that upfront before we start the inspection. So there's no surprises. There's no arguments. And once they're aware of that. About ninety-five percent of the time since we've been doing that, they get it done on the second inspection because they don't want to have to start paying the fees. So it 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 has been very, it's so far in the short term, it's been uh successful. Um, we're getting a lot more compliance that way. Um, and the way to do it is when we send the notice out saying, hey. We're coming out in two weeks from now to do your inspection. We put that fee schedule with that. And let them know this is the way you get charged for it and 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 it's been working. And I would hope if we do something similar to that in this, in this situation, we would get the same results. So the number of violations may not be as many. If the people understand going forward that they have a hundred and twenty days and they correct the violations. And you know, if if a permit has to be pulled, we know that, you know, there's a a large amount of construction work to be done to correct the violations. I mean, there's there's people who go out, you know, that buy properties that are in very bad condition with the intent for cheaper, uh, you know, for a low. Right cost. And then they wanna do extensive work to fix it and understand that may take more than a hundred and twenty days. But we would have the discretion to understand the amount of work they're they're undertaking. If it warrants to get more time and they would have an open permit at that. As long as they pulled that permit within a hundred and twenty days to start the construction work, then we would give them obviously the extended time to do the necessary.
Right, I just 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 touch on the the life safety part of it, um. You know, take for example, a house that someone's lived here for seventy-five years. And they've had a CO since they've been here and then they decide to, now they sell or they they move out, whatever. And it's a simple thing like smoke detectors. You know, maybe they never put them in their house. Maybe they just had the old battery ones, which now I, you know, you know, they have to be ten-year batteries. Um, you know, this this opens up a life safety thing, which is huge to me, you know. Especially from my background, but um, to these new people coming into a house. Not that people aren't aware of it, but you never know who's buying a house. So I think it's huge just to open up. It's a simple violation. It's a simple fix. They go to Home Depot, they're done in a day. So, um, but I think it's a hu- it I think it's great. I I think it's something we need. And I think the combination of what Stuart said and what Manny said, I think we could put something together to, you know. You know, make this nice and solid.
So in the, I'm sorry, Bobby, you done? Thank you. Omar, comments? Dana, anybody?
None for me.
Okay, Dana? Yep, mute.
I I said my piece.
Okay, so uh, mine is about timing. Um, staffing, you know, you could do staffing, people selling, let's call it a four apartment, not four bedroom, but a four apartment. Supposed to be two. I hear the process. There are people living in those other two. They're paying rent. So the the timing of all this, the buyer's sitting there going, well, I'm willing to pay, you know. Eight hundred thousand dollars for uh. Four apartments, but I'm not gonna pay eight hundred thousand for what now seems like two apartments, right? My apartment and one more rental. That changes the entire deal. So your intention may not be to stop a sale. But the outcome may be that it slows it down, it stops it. So that's one issue of timing, even though those aren't your intentions. And I think that's the right thing. It it's like, we have got. When I have sat on some of of the board meetings, they're often. I mean, my favorite was a person who came and said, you know, it's like a three-bedroom and I don't have enough parking for the cars. Because every, I need at least six to eight parking spots. I didn't know. That's the way I bought it. I'm looking at a picture. I'm going, really? You didn't know that that garage was actually turned, that it used to be a garage and the parking was right there? So some of it is sort of this, I wanna make more money, right? It's, that's why they're buying the three-bedroom that shouldn't be a three uh, three apart shouldn't be. So I have this thing about timing because Joe, are you, you know, you you don't wanna stop the sale, but you've got people living in some of these units. Which means you might have to do some evictions. Um, yeah, I don't think there's a lot of these things, but there might be. So I really would encourage you to also, I mean, I like the the idea and I know that. Many of the communities, certainly in the River towns, but beyond the River towns are doing this and have been doing it. I believe that both trustee Bazemore and Kassada brought this up four years ago as an issue. Um, it's not new and it's not new in New York, um. But I do worry about the timing because you guys are really gonna have to move quickly or else some people's mortgages, even if the buyer says, you know what? It's it's a good value. I'm buying it. I wanna move here, whatever. But by the time you guys get to do A, B, C, D, no offense to your department. But honestly, it's not always fast because of the workload that you have. And this is not an insult to anybody and you know that. I really, I'm just being very pragmatic and very realistic that those two issues that I need you to wrestle with. And I don't need to have it necessarily all resolved. It's a big issue, but I think that we do have to. Stop with this nonsense that people buy um units and and didn't do the homework and the realtors know better. Many of our realtors have been doing this for years and they know better. They know the zoning. And they don't tell people by, so I don't wanna be naive, like a lot of games get played, okay? And and we all know that. No finger pointing. I do worry though, and the one item that we control is timing, that's in your hands. And your ability both from a staffing and moving things fast enough so somebody doesn't lose a commitment from a bank for a mortgage. Even if the buyer agrees to everything, best case scenario, it says, you know what, I'm still doing this. It's still worth whatever it is to me. And I'll do all this. I don't want people losing out on commitments from banks, et cetera, et cetera. Because we moved too slowly. We were overloaded. We had vacations. We had a snowstorm, whatever. Because that, on the best case scenario, I'm worried about. On the worst case scenario, I don't have to state concerns. We we understand that there's the big issues that you are going to wrestle with. Are you sure you're gonna be able to do this?
Well, one of one of the things, Mayor, that I would say is, um, when when trustee Kasada brought up about, um, how would we get? Um, this information to some, what we can do work when you say working with the assessors offices. Assessors office has access to MLS listing, right? So if we have access to that and we know which properties, you said, which checked on a weekly basis, it's a, this property now came on the market for sale. We could actually jump on sending those notices out to the homeowner at that point and say. We've noticed that this week your property came up for sale. We send the notice out to them and let them be aware. That you you are gonna be required to get a new updated certificate of occupancy. And catch this at the beginning of when the home goes on the market before it gets close to when they have a potential buyer. And uh, you know, this way so they're aware. Um, what I would think, you know, homes can sell quickly, I understand, but at least we're trying to get on to it and give them the information.
That's a nice solution. That I I agree with that and letting the realtors know and. This part of the country is multiple listing. It's a little disappointing that as Dana talked also, you know, title companies. All these people so got paid to do all these, all the searches. Uh, but we're not changing the world here. We're just trying to get the housing in fair playing field is what I think this is about. Um, can't wait till we do the budgets next month and see what's being asked. So anybody else? I mean, I, I think this is the right thing and we've been talking about it for, uh, Manny will correct me, but I think it's been four years. And I do agree, Stuart, that there's this whole shucks I didn't know that comes up in front of the boards and say. I didn't know this wasn't a legal six, six-family unit. Um, you know, I didn't know. I mean, you know, and and then the boards, they go, oh, okay, so we'll allow you to do that because you bought it and and you're doing the best you can. And that's a problem. But it does happen more often than we'd like to think. Um, Joe, any idea how many houses we're talking about? How many properties? Um, the total population? No, because you don't know what's gonna sell every year, right?
No, no, but um. No, no, but um, we do have a lot of homes on a yearly basis that uh, are on the market. We get a lot of um, foil requests and most of them are from realtors. Sometimes, you know, we get, we, we may get four or five uh, requests that may be for the same property, but it's pretty active.
Okay.
But, but I, you know, like I said, I understand and I appreciate, you know, the concerns that you're saying with the amount of.
We're here. We hear you, we hear you and we see you.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I would say that um, we still, uh, here we go. I, I, I seem to have lost the video frame, but I just got it back. No, I would say that I appreciate, uh, appreciate it, Mayor, that you, you know, you understand that there is timing concern and so forth. But you know, our, our intention is to, um, you know, if it's something that in the long run is gonna be beneficial for us to get a hold of, of some of the issues here and the life safety issues, then we'll, we're, we're committed to do whatever we have to do to get it done. Um, we don't want to hurt people on sales and so forth. We, you know, there is still more talk on how to, you know, hammer out, you know, the little, you know, how it's gonna, the process is gonna work. But I think the concept of what we're talking about is gonna be very beneficial to a lot of the issues that the village faces. You know, the building department faces, obviously. But you know, we, we just have to come up with a plan to make sure it works. We do not wanna, like you said, we don't wanna hurt people selling, the people buying, but we do wanna make them be aware ahead of time of what they're getting involved in. And we, and it happens often. That people enter into owning, you know, they buy a home, don't realize they have this many number of permits open, they didn't know they, they weren't allowed to have the basement apartment. It, it happens often. And um, I think it's, it's something that'll be beneficial for the potential buyer, for the seller. Um, and, and for the village as a whole to get, to start having a process that will get this in some type of control.
Okay, so I'm just gonna ask the final question and it could be Maddie as village manager of the day. Did we call the other towns slash villages slash peaks of the city? And say, hey, what works and what doesn't, not just look at the law that they have? Okay.
We've been in contact with Sleepy Hollow, Tarrytown, and Joe spoke with the folks in Peekskill.
So you know what, what they're doing that they say, hey, I may have done it differently if I were to do it again, or this is what you'll see. So you've done your due diligence.
What they do is none of them stopped the sale. What they basically say is they want the buyer to understand that this is what they're purchasing. And if the buyer acknowledges it, that's fine. One of the municipalities actually requires that an escrow be put down by the buyer, particularly for uh, you know, properties that have, are in significant need of repair. Uh, I am not suggesting that at this point because I think that's an extra part to the sale, which could potentially be more of a problem. But uh, uh, yeah, I, I, I spoke with, I, I heard from the village manager uh, in, in Tarrytown, the uh, architect and village manager in uh, in, in Sleepy Hollow, and I know Joe was in contact with the folks up in Peekskill.
Okay, fair enough. So due diligence was done, just wanted to check that off uh, the list. All right, folks, what do you need from us, Stuart?
Uh, nothing right now, but now based upon our conversation tonight, I'm gonna work on revising the, the, the current version of the local law fourteen. Work on it, then we'll bring it back to show to everybody at a, at a future work session and then hopefully get it scheduled for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next.
Okay, next up, we are back to Corporation Council, Khan. Uh, reimbursement of business expenses policy is typically something that's adopted in the reorganizational meeting at the beginning of the year. Um, I believe the last we worked on this was, Stuart will correct me, I think it was in the fall of twenty twenty. Um, obviously, we've had some other things on our plate uh, since then, um, and the board had also requested some changes, so I will turn it back to Stuart for those.
Thank you, Maddie. Actually, this was last discussed in the winter, early, early winter of twenty twenty, just at the time of the twenty twenty reorg meeting. The last time this board adopted or re, re, re-adopted the uh, expense policy was in twenty nineteen. Uh, there had been some proposals made by myself with then Treasurer Warren at the end of twenty nineteen. The BOT had made some suggestions in early twenty twenty and frankly, it has sat since then. Uh, we've sort of been using the former policy. Uh, I did send to the board earlier today and I apologize for the late notification. Uh, a number of memos, one was my memo from twenty twenty with regard to the different uh, versions of the policy. Uh, I sent you the twenty nineteen policy, the twenty twenty policy that was revised by Corp Counsel and former, and the former treasurer. And the twenty twenty revision of, of that policy by the Board of Trustees. And finally, a version that is sort of, if you wanna call a mashup, it has everything in there uh, with different inks. And for someone who does not know exactly how to use Word, I, I don't know how it actually worked out, but uh, you, you can see that. The, my recollection of uh, what the board was looking for, and I believe uh, Mayor Levin, when you were a trustee, then a lot of this came from you. Was that a number that, that the uh, expense reimbursements in lodging and meals as related to work that would be done particularly by electeds, but possibly also by public uh, officers, which would include myself, the village clerk, the village treasurer and the village manager. Would be more of a DOT approval process rather than a managerial uh, uh, approval process. And that it, uh, so that would sort of create a uh, if you wanna call it a two-tier system. If it's employees uh, that the manager could go in that direction. If it's uh, you know, be it electeds or public officers, that could go through, you know, be a, a Board of Trustees approval. And uh, uh, I, I looked today at some additional uh, legislation throughout the state that deals with this. As I mentioned back in twenty twenty, it's still the case, most municipalities don't uh, legislatively approve their uh, reimbursement policy, they have it as just as a policy. But many of those that do particularly upstate, uh, it is either a uh, a BOT, be it Board of Trustees on a village or a town council approval. In many of those cases, they don't have village managers or town supervisors in that sense. Uh, it's more on a part-time basis, but certainly it can be presented uh, that with regard, be it as to electeds, uh, and if you want for public officers, that can be a uh, you know, requiring or requesting, you know, BOT approval with regard to that. I do think that since it's been two years since it's been approved and the next time would come up at the reorg meeting in twenty twenty-two. This is a good time to start looking at that and revisiting that policy. Uh, and again, uh, I've sent to the board all the different docs that I think would help the board to sort of bring this back in. Trustee White, I don't believe you were on the board at all at that point, so this is really new for you. I think trustees Fritchie and Lopez, you had just started. So this was really brand new. Uh, so uh, I think, you know, for everyone, I think it's, you know, pretty, uh, you know, good to just sort of go back over this. Uh, and I do think it's important clearly to have a policy that relates to employees. Uh, and whether or not the board wants to have a separate policy as relates either just to electeds or electeds and public officers. That's really the board's call, uh, how, how it, you know, how, how it, how, how it could be done. Uh, but uh, uh, you know, I, uh, as I said, I, I've, I've sent you all the different, uh, all the different documents. Uh, you know, uh, I, I, my recommendation is, uh, please look through them. Give me any additional comments you may have, uh, and then we can come up with either be it one or two policies. I think one is probably fine if we're splitting it between employees versus electeds and public officers. We can just indicate who is the responsible party in terms of approval, uh, and what that process should be. Most of the rest of it is pretty standard, you know, mileage is generally the IRS rate that is approved, you know, that, that comes out annually. Uh, you know, and, and that's both in terms of meal rates and things like that. But uh, uh, as I said, since it's been a couple of years since this has been approved, and this is not a policy that requires an annual readoption, it is a policy that is to be reviewed by the treasurer and the Corporation Council as needed. But again, I think after three years, we're probably at the as-needed stage. Uh, particularly because the current policy as na, as, as, as exists right now, does not deal with electeds. The current policy only deals with employees. Technically, employees would include public officers, but uh, public officers have a slightly different role, both, you know, legislatively and in terms of the village charter than do, uh, than do, you know, uh, most of your employees. But uh, again, I, 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 I ask of the board to just, you know, look at what, you know, passed before and what was discussed before. Uh, and uh, uh, so we can come up with a policy so that we can have another discussion in advance of the January reorg meeting. You know, and I can sit down with the manager and obviously with Dale to just see what, what is there. And uh, we can put together a, you know, a complete policy as, as relates to reimbursement of expenses, a, a fascinating topic to say the least, but uh, one that we just wanna have that up to date. So that's my pitch.
Okay. Any board member that would like to give me a call to understand why this is even an issue? You know, feel free to give me a call or Manny, who's been here longer than I have. And I didn't read all of this because by the time I even saw it in my inbox, I was heading out of my office to come to a meeting. Um, and it requires, you know, some thoughtfulness, right? So we wanna make sure that happens. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Uh, last Maddie of, on my list is procurement policy revision. This will be fairly short, folks, just to bring you up to date. Uh, I have been working on the revision. Uh, the board will be having a public hearing next week on local law fifteen, which is the best value option. Thanks to Dale and thanks to everyone else for, for getting that put together, cuz that, uh, that will be important. That will be referenced in the procurement policy as well. I've been looking at procurement policies throughout the state, uh, some fairly just two or three pages long. And some like Nassau County, which are about eighty-four pages long. Uh, but uh, there's actually a lot in the Nassau County policy, which is beneficial and can be used here, particularly as relates to RFPs and RFQs. That's not really part of the procurement situation, but it will relate to best value. Because if you remember best value, will, if, if the board determines to use best value, that will require an RFP. Uh, and setting off all the standards that are required with regard to that. But uh, the procurement policy is uh, being worked on. Again, I hope, I expect to have that to you at a work session, uh, probably November, we're looking at Maddie. Uh, and that would then allow it to have a discussion so that that can be adopted at the twenty twenty-two reorg meeting, cuz that is one of the policies that requires an annual uh, uh, readoption by this board. It will make reference now to best value, it will further detail the emergency exception, which we have in our policy, but needs, needs further ex, explanation. It will also detail that even though you do not require competitive bidding for professional services, as this board knows, we have passed uh, legislation, uh, or actually passed a policy that for most of the professional services, they are going out to RFPs on a triennial schedule. Uh, we recently passed a resolution, or this board did, to allow for an RFP for Defense Council services relating to our litigation. So that will also be updated in the procurement policy. So uh, that's a, a, a work in progress. I did just wanna let the board know where that was. And uh, again, that will be discussed, I, I, I expect in November, uh, so that the board can be uh, ready for uh, its approval at the uh, January uh, reorg meeting. So policies, policies, policies.
Okay, thanks Stuart. We actually do have one more, a very, very short agenda item, it'll be even shorter than that. Um, a couple of weeks ago, the mayor had requested an update on training, um, how we're doing with training. So um, I'm pleased to say, um, our new uh, insurance company um, has been helping us a lot with doing the training remotely. Um, we have nearly one hundred percent compliance among the staff who have taken the training yet, so big thumbs up to everybody.
This harassment training, Maddie?
Yes, I'm so sorry. Yes, it's the anti-harassment training. So October, we're doing the anti-harassment training and then November will be workplace violence prevention. Uh, both of those trainings are mandated to be taken by every single person who receives a paycheck from Village of Astning on an annual basis. Um, so we're doing uh, both of those virtually, um, and then we're having some groups of folks who are gonna be doing some in-person trainings uh, for the folks who uh, require um, hascom training, which is basically uh, learning about the chemicals in your environment and, and how to make sure that you're keeping yourself safe. Uh, things of that nature that are specific to a, a, you know, particular group of employees. Uh, those have been happening in person, some happened over the summer and we'll continue with those um, in the coming weeks. But I just wanted to let the board know that we are on track. Um, obviously COVID knocked us for a loop with some of these trainings. Um, some of which have to be done in person and cannot be done remotely, um, so we're working on getting those uh, scheduled for the end of this year as well. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
We're almost at a hundred percent, so we're at ninety-five, ninety-eight?
I would say it's like, of the staff who've been assigned the module so far, cuz I'm doing it in waves. Um, we're at ninety-nine percent. I think there have been some technical glitches um, that, you know, we've been working through on a, on a case-by-case basis with tech support. But um, you know, the, the spirit is, is definitely there. Everybody's been trying their best to get it done. Um, including our volunteer boards and committees. Uh, for those folks, we're actually at seventy-five percent compliance. Um, I think that might also have to do a little bit with our email uh, issues we've had over the past couple of weeks. Um, so Corporation Council and I have been sort of tag teaming, uh, trying to make sure that we've reached everybody and that they have the material they need to complete it timely. Home calls are gonna start coming pretty soon. So uh, we, we're gonna have a hundred percent by the end of this month, no matter what.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, Mayor, that the, the boards, you know, and Maddie has been good enough to send me the land juice boards and uh, I can tell you Board of Ethics is complete. I believe we are now complete with regard to the CPC RB. People, they, they responded to my emails quickly. Uh, most of the issues that people had were that, uh, most of them tend to use their personal email addresses, so they don't always use the village, the, the, the village of Astning.org address. Uh, but this way I sent it to both addresses so that they were aware of it. If they had a technical issue, I know there was one particular person who did. Uh, they've been in touch with Maddie to try to resolve that, but I, I do wanna uh, just, you know, make it clear, the, the board, the, the folks on the boards, uh, on the volunteer boards have really, you know, stepped up and have been getting this, getting this done, which is, which is really great.
Much appreciated. Are there any comments on the board? I mean, those are very high numbers. I've been doing that since the governor, uh, previous governor had mandated this and it's hard to get in, in the nineties. It's, it's easy to get the first eighty-five percent, that last fifteen percent is forever. You know, hopefully everybody on this board has gotten their certificate and has completed it. I found it really actually terrific. It's different than what I do for work. People should know that wherever you work, if you have four jobs, you gotta do it four times cuz they're not exactly the same. So I thought this one was terrific. So kudos to you guys. Any comments on the board? Okay.
You know, the best part is.
No, I don't know. That is, well, that, it's part of the, and thank you for finding this out. So I think we're ready to go. I do wanna say, um, one comment, um, for some of us, I, um, w, we went to um, an event um, last week for the award that we've spoken about um, with our water plant, et cetera. But one of the things that I learned there, um, or was reiterated, and there was a lot of emotions about this, is that um, someone who has worked with us, and I wanna say his name correctly, so I'm looking at my cell phone, is Nick Klupax. Um, had passed away. He was with us for about six years and he was fifty-eight years old. And I think, um, I am sure that he made a great impression on his colleagues at the water treatment plant. He was an operator, it is clearly um, a very young age um, to, to pass at such a young age. But I'm, I'm, I'm telling you that some of the biggest guys we have working, men and women in our place uh, have just been torn asunder uh, by this loss. It's, um, I don't need to discuss what exactly happened to him, that's for his family to share, but I do wanna close this meeting um, respectfully with just a moment of, you know, hoping that his family's comforted by his memory and um, that our own employees um, have just amazingly wonderful things to say about this man that truly deeply affected them. Um, I did not have the pleasure to know him, but um, seeing how our staff has reacted, I could say that he has made quite um, an impression. And um, we hope his family fares well through this. We're gonna take just a moment. And um, we hope his family fares well through this, we're gonna take just a moment and then we'll close the meeting. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, we are adjourned, thank you ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, goodnight.
Thank you, Joe.